This is a microphone check from the Teaching and Learning Center, Fort Worth ISD. This is a microphone check from the TLC.
Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is now 5:31 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Minis Acts, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We'll go to number two on our agenda, which are recognitions, and I will turn it over to Mr. John Cope for a recognition of baseball and softball.
This evening, we would like to recognize the Fort Worth ISD softball and baseball teams that were district and by district champions. Starting off with the Arlington Heights Lady Jackets, who were the 2023 District 65A District Champions. The team is coached by Michael Townsend, who is here to introduce the players.
We have Peyton Hale, Matty Martin, Jasmine Martinez, Kim Galicia, Kamari Garner, Natty Lee Ayala, Leah Sorenson, and Kirby Slate. And this is my assistant coach, McDaniels.
Let's give them another round of applause. Tonight, we also recognize the Northside Lady Steers softball team, this year's District 65A District Champions. The team is coached by Alan Husbannett, who is here to introduce the players.
Okay, starting off, we got Mira Segovia, Sarah Rivera, Maggie Castaneda, Mia Rodriguez, Shelley Espino, Desiree Ortiz, Chloe Cardona, Lanell Charles Robles, Mia James, Yesenia Oviedo, and Natalia Oviedo.
And our assistant coaches, Coach Flores and Adriana Rivas.
Next, we recognize the Benbrook Lady Bobcats. They were the District 9 4A District Champions and were undefeated in district play this season. The team is coached by Emily Blair, and she will introduce the players.
Okay, I'm going to introduce the girls real quick. We have Josie Goins, our Pitcher of the Year, Kendall Molinar, Defensive Player of the Year, Kennedy Kaiser, Co-Offensive Player of the Year, Seeley Lindley, Catcher of the Year, Sophia Jones, First Team All-District, Michaela Krieger, First Team All-District, Savannah Tucker, Cameron Bentley, Second Team, Rosalind Perkins, Second Team, Samaya Samia Kennedy, Second and First Team, Ava Boyle, Second Team, Bailey Shaw, and Madison Devilla.
Let's give them another round of applause. Now, we will recognize our outstanding baseball teams. The Arlington Heights Yellow Jackets were the 2023 District 65A District Champions. The Yellow Jackets defeated the Northwest Texans in the first round of the playoffs to earn a by-district championship. The team is coached by Travis Rose, who is here to introduce the players.
Drew Flores, Aaron Torres, Stinson Burns, Gabriel Padilla, Alex Holgin, Grant Harris, Adam Noack, Haylen Hop, Nick Munoz, and then we also have Assistant Coach Ronnie Reyna and Truett Hartgrove.
Let's give them a hand. Next, we recognize the Benbrook Bobcat baseball team, who were the 2023 District 9 4A District Champions. The Bobcats defeated the Hillsborough Eagles in the first round of the playoffs to earn a by-district championship as well. The team is coached by Justin Chavez. He is here to introduce the players.
All right, we have freshman Sebastian Martinez, sophomore Jack Stockton, freshman Hudson Stockton, freshman Giuliano Martinez, senior LaMarian Redo, sophomore Ethan Smith, freshman Brendan Barton, sophomore Maverick Mills, junior Jaden Powell, senior Joseph Partita, senior Ethan Waters, sophomore Lucas Jackson, sophomore Santiago Cruz, freshman Fabian Ortega, sophomore Kell Terberney, freshman Ethan Tucker, and senior Tyler Madara.
Finally, we recognize the Diamond Hill Jarvis Eagles baseball team, who were the 2023 District 9 4A District Champions. The coaches and players were not able to join us tonight, but we still want to recognize their achievement and give them a round of applause. And this concludes our recognitions.
At this time, we'll move on to number three, Reports and Presentations. I'd love to turn it over to Dr. Ramsey for the 2023-2024 Budget Development Update.
Thank you. This evening, we have our CFO, Carmen Candelaria Arieta, or did I do that opposite? Sorry. Sorry. And our Chief Talent Management Officer, Raoul Peña.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Ramsey, President Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Ramsey. I'm Carmen Arieta Candelaria. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the district, and with me is Dr. Raoul Peña, Chief Talent Officer. So today's presentation is a continuation of the conversation that we've been having regarding the 23-24 budget. We are on track to budget adoption with this Budget Development Workshop on June 13th. And then we have already published a notice in the newspaper that we've given the public notice of this meeting, of the meeting, that we are going to adopt the budget on June 27th in order to comply with state law. We're also, through Ms. Molinar, we're also going to be setting up some mini-budget sessions for any of you that would like to also meet with us and get some additional information or answer any questions that you might have regarding our budget, so that we can come to you with the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the budget on June 27th. As since the legislature closed, I wanted to kind of now wrap up some of the assumptions that have been in the budget. We are hoping that we don't have any changes into the budget package that we bring for you on June 27th, so we're proposing that the numbers that we present to you tonight will not change through June 27th. First and foremost, we look at revenue and the loss of enrollment. That is about 2,000 students, but that impact has been reduced because of our improved performance in average daily attendance. So that impact has improved, and we've gone from a budget projection last, this year, 22-23 of 87.1, to now 90%. We've also seen a significant increase in our property values. We did get, we did receive preliminary values in April of about 18%, 17.8%. And what, historically, we have seen a reduction through when we actually get final certified and honor about July 25th. So we've built in a 12% increase in property values. Obviously, that's a reduction resulting in increased property tax revenues. We've projected a reduction in indirect cost revenues, because we are going to have reduced ESR funding in 23-24. Through active management and increased interest rates, we've seen an improvement in interest earnings. We have built in some money for the, what we call NIFA, the New Instructional Facilities Allotment for Rolling Hills, that we're allowed to apply not only this year, but next year as well. And we've built in $5,760,000 for the teacher incentive allotment, that Dr. Peña has led the efforts on that. And then we've also included $8,422,000 of recapture dollars. These are dollars that are above our state entitlement based on our property wealth, as well as our student enrollment, and that's $8,422,000 into our budget. So with the legislature, as you know, there was not a school finance bill that was passed by the legislature, and so the school district did not benefit from any increases in basic allotment. But we did have some positive outcomes that came out of the legislature. One of them was through House Bill 3 that allocated $10 per ADA, average daily attendance, plus $15,000 for campus for safety, primarily staff. We did have a significant amount of increase in staff in 22-23 that we just funded out of basically reserves in this year, and that carried forward. We did add additional money into the budget for safety, so it's been built into the preliminary budget. We also received word that there was $307 million in funding for the Technology and Instructional Materials allotment. That was a restoration of the funding cut that was passed last session. Trustee Dar, you had raised that issue at the last meeting. We're hoping to see what actually transpires from that allocation. We haven't received full final word as to what we'll receive, but hopefully that will restore some of that funding. $2.4 billion as a result of the required interest in the guaranteed yield in the golden pennies. That has been built into our model and built into the preliminary budget. There's also some additional money that was built in for TRS to keep active premium increases under 10%. I'll have a slide on that to report our recommendation. And then there was $1.1 billion that was set aside in Senate Bill 30 that will go to TEA to fund school safety grants. We'll see how those are flowed, either through an application or a direct allocation to us. As I indicated, House Bill 100, which was what we had, we were estimating could be passed, which was a school finance bill, so there's no increase in the basic allotment and no property tax relief, other than that was built into House Bill 3 as part of the tax compression that's in current law. Looking at some of the key expenditure assumptions, again, we made it a focus to try to get to a balanced budget. Obviously, we did not at this time, but we continue that to be a focus in the conversations that we have. The compensation recommendations, there's $17.3 million that's been built into the general fund. Dr. Peña will go over the all-funds total compensation. TRS increase, $3.4 million, and I'll go over the how that impacts our employees. We did, as a restructuring reorganization, and based on our calculations, we did realize a savings of $2.9 million as a result of the reduction of those positions. We increased campus allotments to reflect the, to reflect a change to enrollment base as opposed to ADA. and that helped them cover some of the gap in the loss of that 2,000 student enrollment. We had strong adherence to our staffing guidelines for campuses, making sure that all campuses were comparable and had the appropriate levels of base staffing. And then we certainly worked with leadership to make sure that we added additional support for those campuses that are struggling. We added Rolling Hills Elementary. We have a $2 million increase in property and other insurances that is going to be coming forward to the board on June 27. Unfortunately, we continue to see increases in those areas despite efforts to try to minimize those costs. And then we have some one-time purchases that we've built into the budget. And I highlight these only because these could be, these could be taken out of our reserves. And in fact, they are because we're asking for a deficit spending budget. Want to go over the proposed compensation. Certainly, Dr. Peña will go over those in more detail. This is subject to board, final board approval on June 27. We've built in a three, what's been built into the budget is a 3% minimum raise from the midpoint of the salary schedules, and then a minimum of 3% raise from the pay grade from the midpoint. And there's some other adjustments there as well, some market adjustments that have been built in. One of the things that I need to highlight is we are recommending a 3% increase with the anticipation that the legislature will come back and provide additional financial support to fund this increase. That requires, as you know, a special session and maybe as late as September. We don't have information on that. The legislature, however, may come back and require us to add on to this 3%, resulting in a higher percentage, but not providing additional funding for the 3% we've already given. I would like to highlight this because this is something that we worked on, certainly Ms. Molinar, Dr. Ramsey, for their leadership on this, because we brought this issue up early on with regards to TRS and how we could help offset this to our employees. So currently, the district contribution is $287 per month per employee. And that increased despite that allocation that I indicated at the beginning that the state had provided for TRS to keep their rates at a less than 10%. The increase to the employees still increased $44 per month. So where a proposal that we've incorporated into the budget is that we cover 100% of this increase, or $331 for employees, which is a $3.4 million increase. So I'm going to call your attention to the active rates that we've been provided. And if you'll notice the circle there, you can see that our employee only was contribution was $130. And so we are keeping that $130 contribution, so there'll be no increase for the employee. There will be an increase for employee and spouse of $300. There will be a decrease for employee and children of $132, and that is an annual cost. Unfortunately, the employee and family is where we're seeing the biggest increase. That will increase $1,428. So that particular category is just continues to rise.
And why this was so important for us to bring forward in this way was because, in particular, our lowest-paid employees. There are many employees in the school district that work for their health insurance. And so it was important for us to increase total compensation so that we do not have additional employees with zero check or a very low check. So that, this is one of the reasons we're bringing this to the board. It's so very important for all employees, but in particular, our employees that make the least amount of money.
Correct. And that results in, if you look at it from a total compensation, it's an additional half percent of increase. On here is the HMO plan. Those did change as well. Those are different, have different annual cost increases, which I've listed there for you all to see. And then I've put together all the active care plans that are currently open just for, to represent those plans as well. I only selected the primary on the first one. But there's a Primary Plus Plan. There's also an Active Care, High Deductible Plan. You can see some of those increases as a result of the increases from TRS. But again, the primary one, we did, and we did increase that contribution to get that employee to zero. I indicated at the last meeting that we were going to have other benefit changes, where we're constantly trying to make sure that we provide good benefits for our employees in order to continue to retain them and also to recruit. There's a new pharmacy vendor that's coming from TRS. We're going to have a new dental provider for the district that begins on September 1, 2023. So here's looking at our general fund budget, what we're bringing forward. This is based on current law. So our total estimated revenue is $801,503,000. And our estimated appropriations is $846,826,031, resulting in excess appropriation of $45,322,000. If you look at the beginning fund balance that we're estimating right now, $338 million, we would end the year, it's June 30, 2024, at $292,703,000. I've also listed, just so that you can reflect on this as well, is that in our current budget, we've included $10.8 million of one-time purchases. And that's the roof replacements. And that really should say at various sites. It's not just PDC, it's at various sites. $1.5 million that we had to add due to some critical roof replacements that we have to make. Some textbook gap funding. It was originally over nine. We were able to move some of that to ESR, resulting in $2.2 million of funding that we need to add. And our laptop, $7.1 million for that in the budget. If you take those out, we were looking at a negative $34,524,000 deficit. And included in that is the $17.2 million. If you look at it from an object standpoint, 82% of our, of our budget is in payroll costs. So 82% is the largest cost that we have. 9% in, in object code, $6,200 professional contracted services. Included in that is utilities, legal services. I think sometimes that category that's given to us from the state is a little misleading. We're not spending 9% of our budget in professional services. It includes utilities, legal services, contracted services, those types of things. $6,300 are supplies and materials, 6%. And other operating is 2%. 1% being capital outlay. If you look at it from a function perspective and look at our dollar, 57 cents of our dollar goes into instruction. 18 cents goes into instructional support. 3 cents goes into central administration. 20 cents goes into operations. 2% debt service and other. So here's looking at the general fund from where we were last year to where we are today. Last year, excuse me, '21-22, we spent $739,531. We did have a surplus there of $69,832,000. We added to the fund balance, primarily due to the lack of filling positions as well as shifting some of the costs over to ESR. In '22-23, our original general fund that we proposed was $819,514,000, or a $40,382,000 deficit. Our projected general fund as of today is that we will end with $842,622,000 of expenses, or a deficit of $13,206,000. Our revised budget did, was approximately a negative $56 million through the end of April. So what we're coming forward today is, I indicated, is a budget of $801,503,000 for revenue, $846,000, $826,000. How we're proposing to fund it is really the utilization of our fund balance. Our rainy day, this is our reserves. And we have, based on our estimates, we feel confident that we have sufficient reserves to be able to cover this deficit for this coming year. We have, based on the projection, we have 146 days of fund balance at the end of June 30. And if we utilize the $45 million, we would end up at 126 days. The recommendation from both TASBO and GFOA is to keep a minimum of 60 days reserved and unassigned. And also, we have a first indicator that looks at that as well, at 75 days. So clearly, we're above those two markers. Looking at our debt service. Our debt service, we project to end the year with about $6,404,000 for the year. So we've covered our debt service payments, and it is from improved both interest and improved property tax collections. For '24, we're proposing $159 million of total revenues and $149 million worth of expenses with a net increase of $10,300,000. Again, we would have to wait until July to see where that settles. And then we, we would pass and recommend, we would recommend to you, for you to pass a tax rate in August. For food service, we're also required to pass food service as well. So we're proposing a budget of $52,729,000 and a corresponding expenditure budget of $52,106,472, with a small excess amount of $623 to add to our fund balance. And we've already incorporated that 3% of $440,347 into the budget. So if you look at all three budgets across the board, we are recommending that, that you adopt a budget of over $1,488,000. So we are over $1,488,000 corresponding with, with the general fund, the debt service fund, and the food service fund. If we look at expense per student, this is all of those funds. We're spending about $14,846 for student, 45.6% in instruction, 14.7% instructional support, 20.9% in district operations, and 14.5% in debt. Those are the major categories of spend. I'm going to take a look at the adopted tax rates for Fort Worth. So I think you've seen this slide before. I presented it at the last meeting. What's new here is what we're estimating based on current law and the House Bill compression. We think that the tax rate would be 1.2570 or a reduction of 2.64 cents. This is in the public notice. And I think this is, this is the crux of the issue that we've seen as a result of our property tax values going up. Year over year, there's a year-over-year increase in total property value is 17.4%. Those are the numbers that we utilize because those are the numbers that have been published and comes from the Tier appraisal district. Our MCR, or maximum compressed state, state comp ceiling is .79.5 cents. And you add that to the 17 cents that's been approved through Tier 1. And that gets us to 96.50, which is the proposed rate. And you add to that the interest and sinking rate of 29.20, and that's how you get to the $1.2570. I want to call your attention to the bottom right-hand side of the slide. And under the average taxable value of residents, the average taxable rate of residents has gone up 22%. So from $177,695 to an average of $216,688. So if we, if we go and utilize the MCR plus the 17 cents, that results in an increase of $446. Now, we are, we are required to calculate that MCR. And it is state-approved. So we have, we'll have to come back and determine if, what that rate ultimately ends up being. But this would be the highest rate that we could recommend to you to adopt in August. Okay? But again, these are based on preliminary numbers, and we will not know what the final number is until we get the information from the TAD in July. And then we also get the templates from the state where we calculate that maximum compressed rate because we are mandated by the state to tax at a certain amount, as you know. So that is really the, the issue with regards to the tax rate. Looking again at our enrollment, I know Trustee Bridges is not here, but he did request some information. And we did provide this in the, in this presentation. I'm not going to go over all the slides, but I'll, I'll give the highlights here. So for, again, in '23-24, we're projected to be at 90% of ADA, 70.6% projected enrollment, 64,000 projected ADA. If we look at the comparison district by member district, we show a comparison of number of enrollment by district. So District 1 has 8,689 students in this year. And next year, the projection is 8,569. So you can see the, for each one of your districts, what those enrollment numbers are. If you look over year, over year by member district, you can see that percentage-wise, they have not changed. So if you look at District 1, for example, District 1 still represents 12% of the district enrollment or has 12% of the enrollment. And that's the same for '22-23 and the same for '23-24. 10% resides in District 2. But that one went down from 7,184 to 6,778. At the back of the presentation is all of the slides that represent enrollment by each of your districts so that you can have that information. I'm happy to go over that in more detail, if you would like. These are our next meetings, as I indicated. Our next budget mini-sessions will be scheduled. And we hope to propose a budget for your consideration and final adoption on June 27. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Peña.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Dr. Ramsey. I'm excited to share today an update. As you may recall, last year, we did a comprehensive study with TASB to bring us up to speed into how we compare to the surrounding market, including 21-like districts around the area. And so the first part of the process is to collect the data, make sure we're comparing ourselves, start off with conversations about where we want to stand as we do the study. The middle part of the, of the review is that market pay. How do we compare to districts around us? We compare ourselves to the 21 districts that look like us and also smaller districts around the area to make sure we're competitive within, within this market. And then build models for improvement that we can bring to you for review and approval. Brought this to you last year as well, looking at that target of the center, that midpoint being the market rate. And the market pay is focused on recognizing the value of the job as determined by local conditions. So that's where we want to aim is making sure that our employees are moving towards the center. And then, once they get to that value, that they continue to grow from there. Here's a great example that positions us in the, as a district, as it compares to our teachers. So as you can see, there, the orange line is Fort Worth ISD salary for teachers. And the blue line with the diamonds has the local market median salary. So you can see that even at year zero, we're $1,000 above the median salary in comparable districts around us. And we continue to separate ourselves and grow and value the teachers that have more experience. So that's exciting for Fort Worth ISD that the Board has continued to support years of experience. And it's very clear and evident by this line graph. As you can see, we're very well-positioned and consistent across years of experience. So I'll start off with recommendation number one. And the first one is just to really continue to implement pay structures and adjustments to maintain our market position as it compares to our market area, starting with strong salaries and also pay grade midpoints that are connected to that market value for those positions. Recommendation number two, as Ms. Arieta Candelaria shared, our legislature, our legislative update is not clear yet. We're acting in good faith that they will move forward. And so based on our current budget, we are recommending a general pay increase of 3% for all job groups. budget, we are recommending a general pay increase of 3% for all job groups, and then also, our second model is 2% for executives and 3% for all other job groups as well. In both models, that would bring our starting teacher salary to $62,000 with about a general pay increase of $1,925 across the board for all the, all the pay grades within the teacher salary schedule. And so we're excited to make that recommendation today. And also, as you can see, for the teacher structure, the general pay increase was calculated as a percentage of the market median salary versus the base starting salary. So that's exciting that we're using the higher median salary versus the starting salary. And we did similar for our other pay groups, where we look at the GPI based on the employee's pay grade midpoint versus the starting salary for those positions. Recommendation number three is to make minor adjustments to the pay grades to ensure that we're aligning to the changing market conditions as we look at each one of the pay grades across the compensation manual. Also, as you can see, making strategic adjustments to pay grades with significant changes in market value year-over-year. And that's what TASB comes in really handy, is helping us stay abreast of market conditions so that we can continue to stay competitive. And lastly, making adjustments to teacher and salary scales to move towards equidistant steps over time. As we continue to make adjustments, it's really to make sure that every step is equidistant from each other, so that every teacher keeps getting the same amount of increase year after year. The fourth recommendation, I brought a couple of these recommendations to you last time. I'm adding a couple of here based on TASB's review of where we stand as a district. As you might know, one of our highest-need areas has now been for some time special education. Our current special ed stipend for regular, special education teachers is currently at 750. The recommendation from TASB is to move it closer to market, which is $2,000, which I would definitely agree based on our hiring conditions, not just here, but if we can call districts around the area, we're all struggling to find those special ed teachers to work with our highest-need students. The other one is even a higher need is our intensive support areas, and that would be classes such as Deaf Ed, impaired, ECSE, homebound, RISE, seized classrooms, transition, visually impaired, to move that from 2,000 to 3,000 to match the market conditions around the area. So that's the second recommendation. The others I had made at the last board meeting was adding a Deaf Ed transcriber stipend of 450 to match that of bilingual translators, and then also differentiating a stipend for Deaf interpreters based on their certification level, whether it be Level 1, 2, or 3, paying up to $3,500 for the Level 3 certification, and then adding a yearbook stipend, again differentiated by level and size of campus, is that recommendation. And the last recommendation that we're very excited about is to honor external years of service from historically non-creditable entities. I like to use the health services, our nurses that might have worked at a private hospital that traditionally would have not gotten those years of service. We would like to honor those years of service and make sure that we make all of our current nurses and future nurses right by providing them those years of service. And very similarly, the operations tradesmen, as I like to use the plumber example that might have worked at Rota Ruder for many years and never got those years of service added at the start, we'll go back and look at service records and add those years of service to make them right and bring them back to the best salary we can provide them with those years of service. I'll close with the recommendation based on cost. Ms. Arietta Candelaria gave you the general budget number of about $17 million. When we look at all of it, including fringe benefits at about 12%, with a general recommendation of 3% GPI, we're looking at a little bit over $23 million. With the alternate option of 3% increase for all employees, for the exception of the 2% for executives, which is a little bit under 70 employees, that total is $23,127,512. So that's about a difference of about $115,488 between those two numbers. So we're bringing those two models for recommendation for the Board to review and make a final determination at our last board meeting in June. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Trustee Dar?
Thank you. I believe my questions are brief. On average, or what is, what, we're projected to send back $8 million in recapture. What was our recapture amount in '22, '23? Just an estimate, you don't need an exact number.
Thank you, Trustee Dar, for the question. It's about $2.5 million.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
$2.5 million.
$2.5. So now, we're going to be giving back $5.5 more million, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
My next question is about the funds and the expense per student. Fort Worth ISD is estimated to spend about $14,846 per student. I know that there are still some variables that may come out of the legislature, but as of right now, approximately, how much money does the state get per student? I mean, the state, does Fort Worth ISD get per student from the state?
I think I calculated that at some point. Let me run some numbers, and I can get that for you.
Okay. It would be interesting to see what the difference is. On the slide about the tax rate that will be finalized in August of 2023, is, are we finalizing that in August because the law says we have to finalize it in August? Or are we anticipating that we'll have all the information we need from the legislature at that point?
So we should have, based on current law, we should have all the information that we need in order to adopt a rate.
But there's the potential, even after we adopt a rate, for a change to need to be made based on our legislature, or is...
I think if something comes through with regards to the homestead exemption, and that gets passed, that might be on a November ballot. So that might affect us, and that might change.
Okay.
Thank you. And in response to your number, if I can, $3,793 is what I'm estimating that the state provides based on our current numbers.
Can you say that number again?
$3,793.
Okay. Now, I'm looking for my slide. I messed up my earmark. So we're paying $14,000 per student, and the state is providing $3,000 per student.
$3,800.
$3,800, okay. So that's a difference of almost a little over $10,000. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Pena, on your recommendations, recommendation number five, I appreciate you recognizing the service of our healthcare providers and also our tradesmen. I think that I fully support that, and I'm glad to see that you've incorporated that in this plan, so thank you for that. Those are very valuable people in our district.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are, thank you.
And then, my last question is regarding the 70 executives that you mentioned, as far as whether it's a 2% or 3% raise. What exactly, and not specifically, but what level of position is that is considered an executive? What are those positions?
Any executive director in the district going and higher.
Okay.
So executive director, associate superintendent, chief.
So not directors, but executive directors.
Senior officers is correct. Executive directors and up.
Thank you for that clarification. That is all. And thank you for this very thorough report. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
At this time, we will hear public comment addressing items on this agenda. Let me remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange by a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the Board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the Board may reply with, one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry; two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry; or three, direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. While this Board listens to concerns of general nature, speakers should practice normal rules of decorum. Vulgar language and profanity will not be tolerated, as this is a public meeting and our students are watching. Additionally, disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated. We ask the audience to refrain from interrupting speakers and playing audio recordings while they present to this Board. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable Board policy. No presentation may exceed three minutes unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. As soon as the speaker begins speaking, the time clock to your left will start. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. It's essential to gain as much public input as possible, and we understand together, we are stronger and build better solutions when we maximize public input. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. Our first speaker will be Missy Kara, who will be followed by Holly Plemons, who will be followed by Meredith Bowman.
Okay. If you're here to support our grievances tonight, would y'all please stand, just to let the Board know who's here, and thank you for being here. So we're all here to ask you to please grant our request to remove ETR and HealthSmart entirely from Fort Worth ISD. Since none of y'all have been here on the Board since HealthSmart got here, I want to be sure that you know a few things. Almost 10 years ago, Fort Worth ISD accepted grant funding from the CDC and used our students and teachers to pilot a program designed to teach sex ed and create access to sexual health services in a safe, supportive environment. When those contracts were signed, the SHAC used a health education curriculum analysis tool to choose California-based ETRs HealthSmart, but both that tool and HealthSmart were written by the same person, who has also received thousands and thousands of dollars as a consultant to Fort Worth ISD over the years, and in my book, that's a significant conflict of interest. Also, and the evidence-based science used to feign the validity of this program came from CICUS, which is an organization founded on the philosophy of eugenicist Margaret Sanger of Planned Parenthood, the science of pedophile Alfred Kenzie, and the finance of pornographer Playboy's very own Hugh Hefner. This program includes Planned Parenthood as a recommended local reproductive health service provider, at the exclusion of several others, and HealthSmart's vendor ETR also has direct connections to Planned Parenthood, which in the state of Texas would indicate that HealthSmart's purchase is a prohibited taxpayer resource transaction. I've emailed this supportive documentation to y'all about that today. In 2021, the Texas state laws and TEA guidelines changed, forcing a readoption of human sexuality instruction. Last year, Fort Worth ISD violated those laws and guidelines, as well as the Texas Open Meetings Act in an attempt to cover up the $2.6 million illegitimate purchase of HealthSmart. There have been so many issues related to this curriculum adoption process, including excluding 207 other bids for health curriculum that the SHAC and stakeholders never had an opportunity to see, obtaining parent consent forms to teach HealthSmart before the adoption was actually formalized, multiple obstacles preventing parents and stakeholders from viewing HealthSmart, including canceled public meetings and difficult limited access to view it, public misinformation from your program director about whether or not HealthSmart materials actually contain gender ideology. Honestly, this has been a total mess. Can you blame us for raising eyebrows and raising alarm bells about this curriculum? I've offered to personally pay for a consultant to help right the wrongs with this adoption, yet to date, you have not accepted. And today, I emailed you petition signatures from 77 other concerned individuals that were unable to attend tonight, each with their own reasons about why they want to remove this program. I do appreciate your efforts you've made to right the wrongs of this adoption, but still ask you to please take this opportunity to make a fresh start, and please permanently remove HealthSmart and vendor from Fort Worth ISD.
Ms. Plemons will be followed by Ms. Bowman.
Holly Plemons, mom of three, tax parent, Fort Worth ISD. I want to talk to you about HealthSmart. So I did take the time to come to this building, where I was given one hour to review HealthSmart. I was given one computer to share with one other person that came with me. There was one of your staffers that was sitting in front of me, and there was one of your staffers that was sitting behind me the entire time, and that doesn't really make parents feel that they are welcome. It didn't bother me too terribly much, but I can see how it would bother other parents. And in going over that curriculum, I stuck with the high school. Lesson 17, Getting Help for Mental Health Issues. A resource is valid and reliable if it's a trustworthy source. This means that it's verified or shown to be true by other sources. The information it gives you should be up to date, presented in an unbiased way, and come from a recognized expert, a government agency, a medical or professional organization, or other respected group. An info resource may not be reliable or accurate if it's in popular media, newspapers, TV, or magazines, or on a website not sponsored by a government, medical, or professional organization. Be careful if the info is telling you something different from most other recognized sources, or if it's being presented in a way that's intended to sell you a product or point of view. Getting help for mental health issues, did y'all hear me say "parent"? I didn't. I didn't say it. It never tells the children to talk to their parents if they're having an issue. Tells them to trust the government. Do y'all remember when the CDC was telling y'all to go get that shot? Yeah, how'd that work out? All the people that listen to the government are now having blood clots, drop-dead of heart attacks, our athletes. That's the government. You're telling our kids to trust them. Now, the government is admitting that the COVID shot has problems, and that it doesn't do anything to stop the spread of COVID. But you're buying curriculum that's telling our children to trust the government and doesn't say one word about their parent. I have major issues with the sex ed curriculum, and it does not align with the TECS. You guys did not do this meeting correctly. Toby said the reason that she ran this time was because you guys are a freshman board, and she needs to train you. She's been here for 13 years, and she didn't know that the two meetings were not held for the public to review this curriculum? Did she know that parents were getting told to submit an open records request, or they couldn't see it? They can't do that by law. You have to abide the curriculum.
Ms. Bowman will be followed by Abel Garcia, who will be followed by Carlos Tercios.
Good evening, Dr. Ramsey and trustees. Since we have three minutes, I'm going to go ahead and begin with this. As a teacher in Fort Worth ISD, I've had very many opportunities to work with Pearson and with TEA in writing the PE tests and health tests that people will take to become teachers. I've talked to several different people and different admins in the state of Texas. They did not decide to choose HealthSmart because of the controversy that it causes. The school districts of people that are an admin I've spoken to were Houston ISD, Corpus Christi ISD, and Wesley Co. ISD. The choices that they made, they chose to do Goodheart Wilcox. Parent discretion is advised on this tonight. I'm not speaking on data or statistics. I'm speaking from my own personal experience. An opportunity for you all to protect the future generations from an inappropriate age of eight years old to 10 years old. I was exposed to pornography. Those inappropriate images were planted in my mind at a very young age. My parents didn't know. They were too busy struggling in their marriage. And I was a good girl, who was busy, who was following the rules. I got good grades. I did all the things right. My parents divorced. My dad got custody of us. He worked two jobs and did his best. That seed planted at an inappropriate age of eight to 10 years old came back to haunt me my senior year in high school. I was promiscuous, drinking to numb the pain. I continued this through college. At the age of 22, I had found myself pregnant and unmarried. At the age of 26, I had a three-year-old and pregnant again, and still unmarried. All those years, I had mistaken the love that I longed for through inappropriate sexual touching from the things that I had seen, the seeds that were planted in me at an inappropriate age. I had seen these images only a few times, but still believed the counterfeit that this kind of touch was love. I normalized it. There are similar images being shown in this inappropriate age of 11 to 10-year-olds in the HealthSmart curriculum. So because all of this felt satisfying, the enemy captivated... all of this felt satisfying, the enemy captivated my attention. This continued for years. I claimed to be a Christian, but never confessed or admitted that this was a sin until I began searching for truth. This led to many other things, and I ended up going through lots of counseling. Finally, God began to show me who he says I am. He brought me healing and deliverance, as I was seeking and building a personal relationship with him. He planted the new roots, or actually, the original seeds of righteousness and truth inside me. He taught me I deserved dignity, honor, and respect. He continues to heal me every day. He is my first love. I ask you tonight to choose a different sex ed curriculum. If I had been taught this curriculum at an inappropriate age of 11 or 12, and seen the things that is in that curriculum, things would have been much worse for my life.
Abel Garcia will be followed by Carlos Tercios.
Hi, my name is Abel Garcia. I was invited to talk about HealthSmart. For those who don't know, I am a detransitioner, and I moved here from California. The reason why I'm speaking out on this is that I've been informed that the curriculum for HealthSmart has some parts about transgenderism. I'm just here to tell y'all, from my experience, that children who are very young and very impressionable should not be learning about what this stuff is. I did this when I was 19, a legal adult, and I'm already dealing with health and negative side effects. Just for some ideas for y'all to understand, I'm losing my sight. My body is aching. I might be sterile, and just for some of the ideas. I'm a young Hispanic man. My family came from Mexico, and this is what they did to me in California. Everything was sanctioned by the government and by everyone who, from medical professionals to every team that I worked with. They made it difficult for me to reverse everything, and again, I'm just here to tell y'all, HealthSmart is not what we should be teaching kids, especially if it's telling children that they can transition. These kids are very impressionable, and at age, if they are learning this, and if you see on social media, they are learning this at a much younger age than I did. If I, a young adult, was able to fall for this, to have his entire life destroyed, what do these kids have left in their future? So, I'm just asking y'all to not vote for this, and to pick something else. Thank you.
Carlos Tercios will be followed by Donna Collins, who will be followed by Miriam Lambert.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Ramsey. Today, I would like to talk about the grievance turn that you'll be having today regarding the HealthSmart curriculum. I want to show my support to the parents and teachers that are doing this grievance. The concerns that the parents and teachers bring up regarding HealthSmart are about transparency. The ISD has failed to provide a digital copy of the HealthSmart curriculum, even with public records requests. Not only that, but the SHAC meetings have been very vague about the HealthSmart curriculum with what it entails, and the ISD has failed to create a policy for how stakeholders can obtain such materials. What we know about HealthSmart, though, based on the meetings we have attended, and of course, based on the news articles that have been created, is that it removes male and female terms and replaces them with a body. It promotes gender-inclusive terms that are non-binary, and it promotes transgenderism to students. I'll be quoting from Pat Hardy, who's the State Board of Education rep for our area. "HealthSmart is a national curriculum that boasts alignment with national sex education standards in the California Healthy Youth Act, both of which contradicts Texas law. A quick review of the content makes clear this curriculum does not align with the new TECS Texas standards use male and female in teaching puberty, while HealthSmart uses body with a vagina and body with a penis. The new TECS include teaching about contraception to seventh or eighth graders with effectiveness, risk and failure rates, and the prevention of sexually transmitted diseases or infections in pregnancy." Bottom line, the ISD has failed to be transparent with the HealthSmart curriculum and what it entails for the next school year, and I hope that the school board and the superintendent realize that, you know, the ISD is 67%, around 63% Hispanic, around 20% Black, and around 10% white. And I will say that it is very socially conservative. And I will say that if I go to Rosemont Park, or I go to Glen Chris, where I grew up, and I... You know what's going to happen? All of those Hispanic moms, Hispanic dads, Black dads, and Black moms are going to come out, and they're going to say, "What a nerve is this? What a nerve is this?" Because God created two genders, and that is male and female at the end of the day. Transgenderism, with all due respect, is a big pharmaceutical industry con job that is destroying so many lives, and it is done to create billions at the expense of so many young kids, and to create permanent customers for the pharmaceutical industry. Change this and actually represent Fort Worth. Thank you.
Donna Collins will be followed by Miriam Lambert, who will be followed by Kristi Beck.
Hi, my name is Donna Collins, and I live in Fort Worth. I'm a taxpayer here. One of your strategic goals is to enhance family and community engagement. You're spending large amounts of taxpayer dollars on recruiting student enrollment, but do your values align with the majority of the families in this area? According to Pew Research Center, 77% of Texans are Christians. When you force liberal agendas through your educational programs like HealthSmart that don't agree with your community values, I... community values, as I feel most Christians wouldn't, how do you expect to increase enrollment? And I project that enrollment will continue to decline if HealthSmart is continued. Another area that this impacts is teacher availability. Do you think teachers may have retired or sought employment elsewhere when they are forced to teach values that they don't agree with? So, you go to Teach for America to get help finding teachers that agree with your liberal agenda and not that of your populations. I want to highlight HealthSmart. This health or sex education program is against the values of the majority of the population of Tarrant County. I understand it is back on the table for SHAC consideration, and if they choose to recommend this program and you approve it, I expect that you will lose more students, not gain. While some busy parents blindly sign authorization for whatever program you're teaching, a continually more informed parent will be appalled at the early sexualization of their children. I know of at least one family that is withdrawing their children over a rainbow-themed bookmark on diversity, and there are probably more. I ask you to strongly reconsider your position on liberal programs like HealthSmart and give your community what they want, a basic education in reading, writing, and arithmetic. That includes going back to phonics, which we know works. I want nothing but improvement in this district, as my grandchildren will eventually go here, maybe. Might I add a quote from Thomas Jefferson, "To compel a man to furnish funds for the propagation of ideas he disbelieves and abhors is sinful and tyrannical." I would also like to point out that Camille Rodriguez and Toby Jackson have not paid attention to what people are up here saying. You're completely looking down at whatever, and Camille won't even look this way. Thank you.
Miriam Lambert will be followed by Kristi Beck, who will be followed by Tiffany Keach. Kristi Beck? Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Hi, good evening, Board, trustees, and Superintendent Ramsey. Tonight, you're going to hear grievances from several concerned parents and citizens regarding the way in which Fort Worth ISD has handled the HealthSmart human sexuality curriculum purchase and adoption. I have attended multiple student health advisory council meetings regarding this curriculum, and each time, we are either told something different regarding the adoption process, or we are told something different about what is actually in the curriculum. I get the distinct impression that the district is making things up as they go, or they are purposefully misinforming and misleading the public about this process. Let me give you an example. Back at the February 18th SHAC meeting, we were told that sometime in February or March, a human sexuality curriculum adoption committee will be convened, and that adoption committee would review and evaluate curricula. As of yet, no such committee has been formed. I even asked about the status of the formation of this adoption committee at the May 10th SHAC meeting, and was told by administrators, there was no update, and they were no longer following the timeline we were given at the February 18th meeting. What is the process of adoption? Will there be a human sexuality adoption committee or not? If so, when will it form? How does somebody get on this committee? If there is an adoption committee, what then is the role of the SHAC? Has the SHAC looked at any other human sexuality curriculums in addition to HealthSmart? If not, why? And what about all the questions that we, the parents, have submitted at those SHAC meetings? We have yet to get a response on any of them. I purposefully asked at the May meeting, because I have submitted questions in the Fall SHAC meetings, as well as the Spring SHAC meetings, and we have no response as of yet. Another troubling issue that you will hear about in the grievances is that the district purchased a digital license to this curriculum, yet no parent or community member is able to review it. I had to file an open records request, and I specifically filed it to view the digital curriculum, and I was denied the ability to view the digital. So, I went to two separate meetings. I was given three hours each meeting to view the print version, and it was... I was thinking to myself, "What parent has time to spend six hours looking at this curriculum?" And I do want to make mention that in that curriculum for sixth graders, the pornographic images that Meredith spoke of earlier, they are in there, and they have been in my mind ever since, and it's disgusting. So, I am asking you to remove this curriculum from our district. Thank you.
Tiffany Keach will be followed by Amy Super, and then our final speaker of the evening will be Andy Keach.
Why would the board collaborate to hide a basic health curriculum from parents? Is it because this particular curriculum expressly omits terms like male and female in favor of a body with a penis and a body with a vagina? Why would you adopt a curriculum that discards terminology that applies to virtually every species on the planet, except humans, apparently, and then introduces terms like gender fluid, agender, pansexual, all derived from an ideology that is untested and unsubstantiated by any credible scientific evidence? And why is Texas money going to California consultants to pay for this nonsense? Now, I know that the activists and the media and the cult of ideology will claim that any objection to this HealthSmart curriculum is hateful, intolerant, and harmful to every student that might consider him or herself to be part of the LGBT, et cetera, community. But that's a lie, and you know it. It is entirely possible to treat an individual who is distressed or confused, or is experimenting with sexual and gender identity with kindness, compassion, and acceptance, while at the same time, objecting to the packaging of that same distress, confusion, and experimentation into a lens through which everyone must view reality. More importantly, we, the parents, actually do care about our kids' well-being, even more than you do. We have valuable insight into their hopes, their fears, their anxieties. Be a board that respects that and collaborates with parents, and prioritizes education over ideology. We can work together. Fort Worth ISD could set the standard for the nation. Let's not waste this opportunity to stop playing politics and make Fort Worth ISD an example.
First of all, I'd like to also acknowledge and thank the parents who have shown up to support those whose grievance will be heard tonight. This is what community looks like. Get used to it. I've lived in Fort Worth ISD as a resident, taxpaying resident within your boundaries for over 26 years. I've been married 35 years. Both of our children are graduates of Fort Worth ISD schools. They did pretty well in your schools, grown up. They're now families of their own, one of whom lives here locally. And we taught our children to live within their means, and that's something that you guys just can't seem to get through your heads, and it's mind-blowingly, mind-blowingly confusing and upsetting to me to see a $45 million deficit. Thank goodness for rainy day funds. And my home, we chose to buy a house based on the amount of income we knew we were going to have coming in. We chose to buy a home less than what we actually were told we could afford to buy, because we didn't want that hanging over our heads. We saved money every month, as much as we could, so that we could pay for our kids to go to college without taking out loans. That's called living within your means. Were there a lot of things we wanted to give them that would have been nice for them to have? Absolutely. Were they always in our budget? No. And so, the answer was no. Learn the idea of the word "no" when it comes to spending if you don't already have the money to spend. It's not a difficult concept. The example that you're setting for our students by continuing to run at a deficit is something I don't know how you explain to them. I would hate to have to have any math teacher, certainly from middle school up through high school, take the budget that was presented tonight, and explain it to them, and ask them to understand how this is acceptable. What happens when the rainy day fund continues to dwindle further and further down? You've had the luxury of millions and hundreds of millions of dollars in ESRA funds at your disposal for the last three or four years. You've always known when that gravy train was going to stop, and yet, you've continued to make foolish purchases with some of those funds as well. That's going to come back to bite you. It's already starting. I'm asking you to be more responsible with the taxpaying money that we provide to you to educate our children, the children of our community. I support public education. Always have, always will, but this is simply unacceptable. Do better, please.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Andy Keach.
Hi, Board. I'm Andy Keach, Tangwood McLean Pascal. My daughter went Tangwood McLean Pascal. I want to thank you for your service to our city and our children. You know, there's a joke that's been going around the internet, and it's a picture of a pregnant mother, and she's talking to a doctor, and she says, "Doctor, is it a boy or a girl?" And the doctor says, "Well, we'll let the kindergarten teacher decide that." That's the sort of radical ideology that's wrapped up in the curriculum that I have seen, where it says it teaches students such things, such as gender is assigned at birth, instead of gender is identified at birth. The Fort Worth that I grew up in, and that I think that we've all known, is a place where pluralism is really valued, where we realize that our neighbors don't all think the same, but we don't go to extremes. We avoid the extremes. And there's not a person in this room who believes that a boy can become a girl, or that a girl can become a boy. We should not be thinking about an extreme curriculum that would push that sort of ideology on our kids. And so, as you guys consider what to do next, I hope you reject that sort of extremism, and let's do the Fort Worth way. We approach our kids in a reasonable fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks to each of you for being here this evening. At this time, the board will recess and reconvene in the board conference room for executive session. The time is precisely 6:48 PM. The date is Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. We will recess and reconvene for executive sessions authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, under sections 5541, 071, 24, and 6.
Linda Jackson, General Counsel for the District.
Thank you. I will now ask each member of this board whether he or she is able to serve as an impartial member of this body and to arrive at a decision based solely upon the record in this matter and information presented at this meeting and not on any other information he or she may have heard prior to this meeting. Any member not able to serve should say so now and ask to be excused. For the record, all trustees have remained seated. A recording of this hearing must be made. Accordingly, please avoid talking when others are speaking so that the recording will reflect the proceedings accurately. This hearing will be conducted in open session as follows. The complainants and the administration will each have a total of 30 minutes to make their presentations to the board. The reason for that time limit is because this is a combined of six grievances, I believe.
That is correct. Where's your timer, please?
I'll keep time, and I could give you a minute marker warning if you'd like.
Okay.
We'll get there in a little bit. This is not a formal legal proceeding, so no strict rules of evidence or procedure will apply. Also, there is no cross-examination. The board is not required to consider documentation or claims not previously submitted or issues not previously raised. There will be an opportunity for board members to ask questions. However, board members are not subject to questioning by the complainants, administration, or legal counsel, nor are they required to ask questions. If at any time during this hearing, the board determines that discussion of specific district personnel or trustee related to this complaint should be addressed in closed session, then the board may elect to recess to closed session at that time. Just a quick reminder, per board policy, GF local. It does state specifically in there if there's any issues with employees that it shall be held in closed session. So as a complainant, you will present first. I will keep the time for presentations and will notify you when you have two minutes remaining, or would you prefer some other minute marker?
I would like to reserve seven minutes for closing, and I would like a three-minute warning that my 23 minutes is up. So if you'll notify me at 20 minutes.
Okay.
Notify me at 20 and...
I'm not good at math, so let me figure this out.
If you notify me at 20, that gives me three minutes, and then I can retain seven, so...
Got it. The administration's presentation will follow the complainant's initial presentation. Ms. Jackson, I will notify you when you have two minutes remaining, or would you prefer some other minute marker?
At 18 minutes, please.
Any time remaining of your 30, of your initial 30 minutes can be used by you for your rebuttal after the complainant's rebuttal and so forth for the administration's as well. Following the presentations, the board will meet in closed session with its attorney for advice and may then return to open session to deliberate and to take action, if any. Does anyone have any questions or initial procedural matters that need to be discussed?
Yes. So when a grievance is held in open session, the deliberation in the voting of the grievance can also be held in open session. That decision is up to the board, and we would ask for transparency since transparency is at the heart of this issue. If the deliberation would be held in open session and not in closed session so that the public may see how each member of the board... the public may see how each member of the Board is responding to the issue of Health Smart.
Yes, ma'am. So, when the hearing is held in open session, deliberation must take place in open session. So, we will follow that, and then the only reason we'd be going into closed session is for them to receive legal advice.
Yeah. I would assume that the legal advice has been given in advance.
No, because I haven't heard your grievance.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other questions, the complainant may proceed.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate your attention to this matter as it is incumbent on the community in which you live, and it is not a black or white matter, it is not a brown matter. This is the reputation of the city of Fort Worth and the Independent School District as far as how they treat sexuality, education, and respect for parents' rights, as well as respect for the law. Thank you. On page, in your book, Exhibit 10 is an addendum to the remedy, and we would, at the very first, like to direct you to the fourth from the bottom and redact from that addendum request, the Director of Health and PE Wellness must be terminated, and we would remove that as a request and respect that, hopefully, that we would get to see the seriousness with which this Board takes the matter by their own initiative in this case. Thank you for the remedies that you have provided regarding policy and amending actions midstream to not violate the Toma Act. As a reminder, SHAC is a state policy, a state law set forth in HB 1625, and it is incumbent upon you to follow that law, as well as Education Code 26. At the heart of the matter here is multiple parents, not just the parents here, did not have access to the sexual health curriculum, and the response that you gave in the grievance level two was that it was a health curriculum, not a sex curriculum. Well, if it is a health curriculum, it is certainly full of a lot of sex ed. And all of the correspondence, not all of the correspondence, but much of the correspondence between parents and the administration is requesting information in regards to sex education, and what is being withheld is the sex education. So, I do not believe that the response to the level two grievance, that this is health curriculum and not sex curriculum, so it doesn't have to meet X, Y, and Z standards. It does not matter. Curriculum is curriculum, and if it goes through the SHAC, you must comply with the SHAC laws. So, we refute that as a response. All grievance went directly to the SHAC, the head of the SHAC, with an expectation of transparency and factual, accurate communication. It was noticed that the SHAC itself was not set up correctly, and while the grievance here have been open to grace and forgiveness, that once they pointed this out, there was no remedy provided. In fact, the only remedy that has been provided at all along the way has been provided by this Board by mitigating and stopping so that there was not a violation of Toma and that there was not a purchasing violation. While the curriculum was, in fact, purchased before the Board authorized it, which is illegal, it's a failure to go through the proper fiduciary channels. Those things are still not the most critical issue with the taxpayer. The taxpayer is most aggrieved by the content of the material. So, if you'll go to item 48 in your book...
Can we get a page number?
Yes, just a second. Actually, it's going to be item 47, I apologize, and it's the first page. Fort Worth ISD is out of compliance. I don't see a page number, maybe it's 255, 254. Fort Worth ISD is out of compliance with TECS, TEC 28.004 in House Bill 1525. I apologize, I previously stated 1625. Human sexuality instructional materials were evaluated and approved by Instructional Materials Advisory Committee, not the SHAC, and were purchased prior to formal adoption of curriculum of the Board. These materials were not easily identifiable on the Board agenda, and they were not transparent. If you'll recall, when these were placed on the Board agenda, the language was not consistent in such a matter that not only was the SHAC not being transparent in how it was operating, but that the administration was also putting words on the agenda in such a fashion to conceal what was actually being voted on. Both of these things are illegal, and again, go to the fact that there was some type of overt cover-up here. And while these things are troublesome, at the heart of the matter, the resolution to all of it is that you change all those policies, but that you do not move forward with Health Smart. My next outline, or the next content that I want to call to your attention is it was testified to tonight that ETR, Health Smart, is a sex ed program, and that using semantics, which I have already alluded to, to say it is not, is not a validation for you to move forward with the program of Health Smart and to use it as your sex ed program or instructional material. Item 24 states, if you look on the whole content of item 24 under Amy Curry's communication, here is just one small example of where the sex education is asked for, and it was not readily available. Within each individual grievance, there is communication to the different administrative members where they were unable to get answers or transparency about the curriculum, and the purpose of the SHAC is to make the curriculum, regardless of whether it's SEL, character traits, education, no matter what the content is, if it goes through an advisory committee, it is a bridge between the administration and the public to create transparency. Those were the reasons those laws were ever written, and if you look up the law, it says that on the analysis of those bills. So, this Health Smart is in its third edition, and it does not comply with 50% of the TECS for health, which was stated in the response from the level two grievance, that Health Smart was chosen because it met the TECS. That is not a justification for using Health Smart. For one, it's a false narrative, and for two, even from an expense standpoint, there are many educational materials that are provided to you via the state that would have cost you less. Now, I know that for this Board, y'all have already expended and committed, and we are asking you to go out of your way and get out of that contract. And if you cannot get out of that contract and you cannot reimburse, it's a hard lesson for this administration to learn that they've wasted that money. And maybe the solution is that you have to sit on it and not offer health. Offering health is not a state requirement for graduation, so you can just take health out of your curriculum. You can also just take sex ed out. If you're in a financial pinch, which it sounds like you are, then you can just remove them and sit on that until you can come back and get the curriculum the State Board of Education has approved, which I actually think you still can. The window is still open on that for you to get Goodheart, Wilcox. The other thing that I want to talk about with this purchase is that it's a digital purpose, a digital purchase. So, the curriculum is an open education resource, and it can be changed on the fly by anyone that owns the content. So, even if a parent is allowed to see it, whether it's in print form or on digital form, that's not necessarily what they're going to see. The other issue here is the way you have set up your opt-in, which is a state law that the students have to opt in, is that you're sending out an opt-in and an opt-out, and that defeats the purpose of the opt-in. So, we are asking you to only operate with an opt-in, and if somebody doesn't opt in, you don't call the parent and say, "Hey, did you mean to opt your child in?" You need to trust that that's what they want. But if you want parent participation, you're going to have to have something that you can send home with them. If you believe that the parent has the right, which every parent at this table wants to have the right to communicate to their children about sexuality, then you're going to buy something that isn't a format that that student can have as a discussion with their family, and that meets their family's values, not just the school's values. But we're asking you for the school to have values that set Fort Worth ISD apart. So, Exhibit 56 through 71, if you'll go to your index, Exhibit 56 through 71 is basically Kristi Beck's, which Kristi Beck's grievance is the most detailed as far as the evidence that we provide for you. So, if you want to study the evidence provided, if you will go to Kristi Beck's evidence, you will have the most comprehensive look of evidence for all of the allegations that are being made here. And then I would like to talk to you about the transaction that punctuates the business sequence of Fort Worth ISD, showing purchases were made outside of the purchasing policies that are required by law of fiscal accountability and transparency. And I'm not pointing a finger, and there's no anger from any of these parents for anything other than the lack of proper structure of the SHAC. And with respect, we appreciate that it was halted, but now, I once heard that a doctor who commits malpractice is 90% less likely to be sued if he tells the family he's sorry that he made a mistake. And I kind of feel like this Board wants to say, "We're sorry, we've made a mistake here," or even the administration wants to say, "I'm sorry, we've made a mistake here." But it's not coming forth. The "I'm sorry, we've made a mistake" means that you kill any memo of understanding, any contract with Health Smart, and that you do not move forward with this. And if you feel compelled that you have to provide alternate sexuality education, then don't offer anything. This 88th legislative session, there was about a day and a half of banter back and forth over some curriculum, and one of the senators finally said, "Look," and it was over sexuality, "if you're not going to teach X, don't teach Y. Let's be fair, and so don't do any of it. If you are feeling compelled that you have to teach about alternate sexual lifestyles, then don't teach anything about sex and go to another source for it." So, if that's what's compelling you here with Health Smart, we're going to ask you to not do anything. That's how egregious it is. So, I also, while this has not been a part of this particular grievance, and we did not provide you the copy of this law, SB 22 was written in 2019, and it prevents taxpayer funds through education from referring or contracting with Planned Parenthood. And ETR, Health Smart, is produced by Planned Parenthood. As a matter of fact, if you flip it over and look on the back of their printed brochures, it says, "Produced by Planned Parenthood." And it is their curriculum. So, you have been in violation of many laws, not just the SHAC, but you're in violation of SB 22 as well. Now then, under special exceptions, number 23 is a letter from Ramsey, and I want to say that we would appreciate that parents not be spoken down to, that this email is condescending about parents being able to make good judgment or being expected to stand up to understand the principles acquired by SHAC. Now, I've worked with many SHACs in many different school districts, and I just came from Houston ISD, and I'm here to tell you that if you have a parent who has asked to serve on a SHAC Board, they do know what it means, and they are willing to let you tell them exactly the policies, and they can pick it up pretty quickly. So, the failure of understanding here is not with the parents. The failure of understanding has been with the administration who has put forth and exercised the SHAC. The determination is whether or not it was intentional so they could drive their own agenda, or whether it was out of ignorance. But regardless of which it is, it is unacceptable for a school the size of Fort Worth, who educates the number of students that Fort Worth does from all different walks of life, to not be better informed and knowledgeable about how to operate the SHAC. So, under that, we would ask that there be a different tone taken from this school district towards the parents who do apply and do get on the SHAC Board. Now then, the laws that you are not in compliance with, the laws are listed in Exhibit 5, Exhibit 6, 7, and 8. And so, that's going to start on page 31, which is your copy of House Bill 1525, and it talks about how you must provide the sexual health curriculum to the public, and you simply are not in compliance there. It also says that a parent's discretion, review, or purchase a copy of curriculum materials is provided by the subsection. And Catherine Pampa offered to buy, since it said that you might have to buy, and she was never communicated back with on what she had to do to go about to buy it. So, there is a clear violation with this school district to prevent members of the public from having access to the material that you're teaching, and this is a clear violation of the law. So, Tab 6 is from Education Code 26, and I believe this we'll talk about at the very end when we close. It's how you hurt parents by excluding parents from their role in educating their own children or being a part by knowing what's being talked about at school, especially in this area of sexual health. This is something that parents want to impart themselves, and by doing so, you have taken that away from them. The other law is Texas Education Code 28, which is specific to the school health advisory and how you are to handle the instruction, the number of hours in health education in kindergarten through eighth grade, and if the school district requires health education for high school graduation, what years you must do it in. So, this should be your guide for what is happening in the event that the school is not aware of that. It is in here as part of this grievance, and we do expect that you comply 100% with that. And as one of the grievants testified tonight, that she actually offered to pay to have an advisor come and help you set up your SHAC committee. So, it's sad for me to see this because I believe that the issue at hand is a lack of desire to want to work with parents, a lack of desire to want to do it right, and we need to see from this Board a huge desire to do it right, not for one, but for all. And that is what this is about. It's for all. It's not about a specific content. It's about communicating directly to every parent what is in that content and making it available. Now, I do believe the content is egregious, and I believe that the person who is making the decision and did, in this case, make a solo decision for this to be the curriculum was very short-sighted about the character that the city of Fort Worth prefers be aligned with the reputation and the culture of this city. And you're following the law, abiding by proper cultural norms, and the curriculum that you choose is paramount in the reputation and the legacy of this Board. When you choose to divert attention with things that are not factually based in science and not relevant, then you are choosing not to teach reading, writing, and math. and not relevant, then you are choosing not to teach reading, writing, and math. I'll reserve the remainder of my time.
You are at 19 minutes and 16 seconds. Ms. Jackson, you may proceed.
Good evening, President Jackson, Dr. Ramsey, and members of the board. You just heard from the complainants regarding their concerns with what the district failed to do in reviewing and in choosing the human sexuality curriculum for future recommendation to this board. This grievance is not about the content of the curriculum, it's about the process. Respectfully, the district acknowledges that there were, in fact, procedural errors and missteps in the process used by the Shack to identify a human sexuality curriculum to recommend to the board for adoption. The district also recognizes that more transparency and parental inclusion in that process may have prevented the concerns raised in this grievance. In response to parent and community feedback, some of which was presented to the board during public comment over multiple board meetings, district administration elected to withdraw items posted for board consideration to allow time to review the process found in Board Policy EHAA legal. This was to ensure compliance and transparency. As a result, most of the concerns raised here tonight have been addressed or will be addressed in the near future. Given that the board has not yet convened the Shack to begin its work via a board-approved resolution, the question becomes what remedy, if any, should be granted regarding complaints that were acknowledged and are being corrected by the administration? As a point of clarification, in May of 2022, the board approved a comprehensive health education curriculum, K through 12, offered by HealthSmart. It covered 11 to 15 different modules dealing with health education in general. Those topics align to the TEACs. Human sexuality is one module out of the 11 to 15. Let's talk about the grievances that are before you. November 1st, November 21st, 2022, we get the first grievance, and it alleges Fort Worth ISD is out of compliance with TEACs, Texas Education Code 28004 and HB 1525. It also said that instructional materials and supplements were not readily available for review, bylaws were not available for review, and the vote to approve instructional material was taken before adequate inspection of the material and discussion could take place. The remedy requested was for Fort Worth ISD to operate in compliance with all of the laws, full transparency, and immediate accessibility to all human sexuality instruction materials, and that the board delay adoption of curriculum until the matter could be resolved. Also, on November 21st, grievance number two, alleged the same thing. Fort Worth ISD is out of compliance with TEACs, Texas Education Code 28004, HB 1525. The remedy: compliance with the law, a well-communicated plan to parents to review the curriculum, the board to vote no in adopting HealthSmart, and to send back to Shack so that they could follow the state-mandated adoption process. Third grievance: Fort Worth ISD is out of compliance with TEACs, Texas Education Code 28004, HB 1575. Additional allegations that the human sexuality instructional material was approved by an academic committee and not by the Shack, the curriculum was purchased before board approval, materials were not easily identified in board agenda material. The remedy: Fort Worth ISD operate in compliance with the applicable Texas laws, and that the board delay adoption of material until the matter is resolved. December 21st, 2022. The allegation was that the December 13th, 2022 Action Agenda Item N, the title of that item failed to accurately describe the subject action of convening the Shack. The remedy requested: void the action, make sure titles or accurately describe the content, reprimand the responsible parties, and that all future items be fully transparent. What has been the district's response? Initially, the district delayed the adoption of any curriculum for human sexuality instruction and opened the process by creating opportunities for parents to schedule time to view the curriculum. The administration also published the list of Shack appointees and their affiliation type, whether they were parent or community member or staff, in compliance with the law, so that we could demonstrate that of the 25-member board, 15 of them are parents, four of them are community members, five are staff members, and one of the members serves a dual role as both a parent and a staff member. So we are in compliance. After the responsible parties acknowledged their error in the Action Agenda Item N of the December 13th, 2022 board meeting, this board, on January 10th, which was the next meeting, rescinded their action authorizing the Shack to begin reviewing curriculum. No new board-approved resolution to convene the Shack for purposes of evaluating curriculum has been issued. That action has not taken place yet. In January of 2023, the administration refocused, and the Shack started the work on team development, establishing their values as a team, and how they would work together. Since that time, the Shack has met, two subcommittees have been formed. One to deal with bylaws, how they're going to work together and make decisions. The second subcommittee is on communication. That committee will bring forth recommendations to the full Shack on how often and by what method information will be shared with parents and stakeholders. Both committees are led by non-district employees, and their work is still in progress. Once the board actually approves a resolution convening the Shack for purposes of evaluating and recommending a human sexuality curriculum, it will be the Shack's responsibility to create the timeline for execution. This will include public meetings, coordinating the time and manner for parents to view material, and reaching consensus on the recommendation to you as this board. The administration anticipates bringing a resolution to convene the Shack for this work for the board's consideration in July or early August. The Shack members have been provided copies of the applicable requirements under Texas law as well as board policy, and they are using these documents to frame their bylaws, their policies, and their procedures. That work must be done first before they begin the process of actually reviewing curriculum, which this board has not yet convened them to do. With regard to the requested remedies, these have now been expanded, as you saw in the addendum that was included in your packet. And it now encompasses such things, not just comply with the law, not just have a transparent process, but now it includes such items as restricting the district from working with a specific vendor, the vendor's staff, or anyone associated with the vendor in any capacity district-wide. It now includes defining discipline levels for staff. They just withdrew the item that said they were demanding the termination of an employee. They've submitted two draft policies for adoption, one governing how this board conducts its meetings, and the other outlining how the Shack should conduct its business. These new remedies not only exceed the scope of the original complaint, but by proposing such remedies, it appears the complainants are attempting to usurp the authority of others. To grant this new round of remedies would usurp the authority of the committee, once they're authorized to do so, from doing its diligence in reviewing curriculum. It would usurp the district's authority in determining which vendors it can and cannot do business with via contracts or by association. It usurps the superintendent's authority to deal with personnel matters, and it usurps this board's authority and obligation to hear and acknowledge the diversity of voices on this matter. Further, the amended requested remedies proposed that the district follow the complainants' guidelines and protocols for the process. That's the Shack committee's responsibility, to define their guidelines, their protocols, their bylaws on how they are going to operate in bringing you a recommendation. Recognizing the need to balance what the law requires with what our community expects, the administration is ensuring that relevant policy is followed while working toward transparency and community awareness. The administration has corrected any procedural errors, and we've worked for transparency in the process. Accordingly, we urge the board to uphold the decision of the Level 2 Hearing Officer on these combined grievances and allow the Shack, once they are duly authorized by a board-approved resolution, allow them the ability to complete the process of reviewing and selecting a curriculum to recommend to you for sexual, human, human sexuality instruction for the 2023, 2024 school year. In addition to the statement that I just provided to you, there are a couple of things that I do want to clarify as it relates to statements that were made in the original presentation. I'd like to point out, they directed you to Dr. Marcy Sorenson's response, and in her response, she never indicated that there was not a sexual, health, sexuality component of the material. The point she was making was the district adopted a full, comprehensive material that covers 15 different modules, and human sexuality was only one of those. That module had not yet been introduced for instruction, but it was a part of the HealthSmart curriculum that was purchased. The new information that I ask you to disregard, the request that purchases, that, excuse me, that the purchasing department follow the rules, that was never a part of the original New information that is being presented for the first time tonight. The second item, SB 22, dealing with the relationship with Planned Parenthood, again, not a part of this grievance, never raised as a remedy before, new information presented for the first time, and is, in fact, the subject of a separate grievance that is going through the process, should not be part of your deliberation and consideration tonight. We would ask you, based on what was originally submitted, the proactive statements, positions, and duties that the administration has put forward to correct the deficiencies, the fact that you have not yet convened the Shack to do the work that they are complaining about, that because of that, we ask that you respectfully uphold Level 2's response, allow the committee to do its work, and then perhaps there may be a more relevant issue. This is not about the content of the curriculum, this is about the process used to bring you recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. You are at 13 minutes and 15 seconds. Ms. Low, you have 11 minutes.
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, on page 256 of your board book, the third complete paragraph begins as a point of clarification. The HealthSmart curriculum was reviewed by a curriculum committee that included teachers from Fort Worth ISD as well as members of HPE Department through Health Adoption Process IMA, and is aligned to the TEACs. What was approved by the Board of Trustees was a health curriculum adoption in bold, not a human sexuality curriculum. There has been no distortion of what was stated by any member of this grievance committee. I, I want to say that as far as working with Ms. Jackson, she has been very professional and is an excellent employee of the district's and has always had a great element of fairness, and I, I believe that that is sincere tonight as well. However, I clearly disagree that because of the process, and you heard Mrs. Jackson herself talk about all the failures in the process, all the failures in the administration, not just one person, but two people, and three people, and four people. There were so many failures that they have already corrected, and while we're grateful for that correction, at the heart of the matter with any body, any body, B-O-D-Y, of government body or school district body, is the ability to trust. And when you have that many failures, you cannot trust. And when all of those things fell through the cracks and were not followed, then it does become about the content, because the content did not go through the proper process. And therefore, if you will turn to, next to last, if you will turn to page 101, and by the way, there were very few additions to what we had originally asked, but we did, in fact, make some additions at the second level, which is acquired by law. We ask for the remove, removal of all ETR's HealthSmart, Health, and Human Sexuality Instruction, including digital, printed, supplemental, journal, slides, teacher materials, posters, handouts, and brochures from Fort Worth ISD District-wide, K through 12. Well, again, on the second time around, I understand this is a conflict for this board and for this administration, because this administration is going to need to have their hands slapped for buying something without permission. You can't, if you are undoing everything and correcting everything, then you have reversed the funds that have paid for this, and those funds are back in your coffers, and there's no issue. But you have an issue because funds have been transferred to pay for this curriculum, and you did not authorize it. And it's going to be up to you to stand up and say, we're represented of the taxpayer and of the children that go to this school and for this community, and the administration is held accountable to us. And the only way left for you to do that is to say, this curriculum cannot move forward because it did not go through the correct process. And yes, according to the laws of this procedure, I can talk about walking on the moon if I want to, and, and you don't have to consider it, just as I said my comment about an attorney. So there's nothing erroneous for me to say to you that SB 22 says that you can't, there is nothing wrong with that, and in fact, it's incumbent upon you as board members to know what the laws are that affect your school district and that are going to affect you. And yes, there are more grievances. And in, in response to that it's not representative of the body, there is a member of Shack sitting at the table who has a problem with the Shack. You may see right here, four white women, but I want to tell you that I could file 100 more grievances on this. I don't have the time, and I was trying to be nice to consolidate all of these so that you didn't have to hear 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10, 10, so that we could look at this as a one-composition issue. But if it is necessary for you to understand that this is not something that is isolated to a certain socioeconomics or a certain skin color, that this is your community that is not in favor of you using instructional material for sex education that aligns with the CDC standards and Planned Parenthood, especially since it's already been outlawed in the state of Texas. I don't know, I would like for you to have local control, but when local control makes bad decisions and allows bad decisions to happen, then the state's going to continue to write more and more laws, and they're going to tighten it up a little bit tighter and a little bit tighter, and there are going to be more parents coming and complaining because of the broken trust. So our ask is that you end your contract and your relationships with ETR associates John Henry Ledwith, Susan Teljahon, and Fort Worth ISD District-wide immediately and permanently. Terminate any and all contracts or memorandums of understanding cooperative agreements between CDC, CDC Dash, and Fort Worth ISD, including PS, RFA 13-13- CDC, CDC dash, and Fort Worth ISD, including PS RFA thirteen dash thirteen oh eight and PS RFA eighteen dash eight oh seven. These are grants from the federal government. These grants tie you to a curriculum that is not consistent with Texas's standards of education. Do not allow education resources in Fort Worth ISD and that the sequence of the Board of Trustees' adoption of human sexuality curriculum to precede recommendations of Shack. And again, we have put forth two recommendations for policies, and we can wait. It was a request by Ms. Jackson to wait and to see how those were formulated and whether or not you codified those as to law. Our request today is that because of the turmoil and the failure of the, the system, the administration, and how they shove forward this particular product, that this product be restricted. Yes, it's expensive, but you still have the opportunity, if you choose as a Board, to teach health at that level and to teach sex ed, you can utilize the curriculum that the State Board of Education has approved. And if a parent opts out on that, those chapters are not available if they opt out. And if it's on digital, the student is locked out of that, and that is not the case with the current curriculum. The student is not locked out of the sexual education portion of the digital curriculum. So it is not safe, and we're asking for you to stand up and do the right thing. And yes, we believe that the administration and the superintendent have some serious reviews to do as far as keeping children safe and the quality of curriculum in this district to be above the standard that it currently is. And I believe one of the parents testified, I mean, it's clearly not a community issue because the other communities that were just mentioned who are refusing to adopt Health Smart, their makeup is, they're very much like yours. It's, this is not about, this is about somebody spent the money before they had permission. This happens a lot in this district, and that's probably why you have a deficit. So we come before you and compel that you violated parents' rights, that you've hurt many a family because content has been put before. Many of the members sitting right here in this complaint that exposed their children to material before they wanted and in a fashion that was not what they wanted them to see. So we're asking you to do no harm and to follow every letter of the law, and that it's your job as Board members, now that you're aware of what has happened, to compel your administration to not skimp on any element of the law with health and sex education unless you choose to remove it from what you offer as a district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Low. Ms. Jackson, you have seventeen minutes.
Trustees, let me remind you of one thing. There was no sex ed curriculum taught this year. You halted that process when you took the action to rescind the convening of the Shack to make recommendations. So there was no sexual, human sexuality curriculum adopted. There was no human sexuality curriculum taught this past school year. It was put on hold. You may recall even hearing during public comment a parent say, "What about those parents, those of us who checked? Yes, we wanted our children to get this information, and they didn't get it this year." So you have done no harm. There was no curriculum taught this year. Health, the health curriculum in its totality is a requirement in Fort Worth ISD, ninth grade and sixth grade, so it can't be removed. The human sexuality component, remember, is just one component of health education curriculum. That also includes physical education, diabetes, making nutritional decisions. Health education encompasses a lot more than this singular issue that we are dealing with, but you have not moved forward. The last thing that I would ask you to give consideration to is, and I will say this as respectfully as I can, the loudest voices and the most frequent voices before you are not the only voices that you have to consider. Each of you have a voice, the students have a voice, the parents have a voice, the community has a voice, and we have to take into consideration a process that will allow all of those voices to be heard. When the time comes to bring before you a recommendation for a curriculum, all of those voices will have an opportunity to tell you what they think about the curriculum that is being recommended. This is not the time. We are not at that stage yet. We have not yet convened the Shack with a Board-approved resolution. That will not come until your meeting in July or your first meeting in August. From that point, because the Shack will have developed bylaws and a communication strategy and timelines for how the work is going to be done, you will get to see, parents will get to see how this process is going to work. They will get to have a voice and see, "How many public meetings are we going to have? Where will the material be? How much information will be, will we be allowed to see?" All of that will be coming, but it is not here yet. So the issues before you are being addressed, the new process has not yet started, and it will not start until you approve a resolution convening the Shack to do this specific task. Right now, they are working on bylaws and communications. So because of that, we respectfully ask that you uphold Dr. Sorenson's decision at Level Two and allow the Shack Committee, once it is properly convened, to do the work that you're convening them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions of any of the parties at this time? Okay, no question. This concludes the hearing portion of this proceeding. At this time, the Board will move to close sessions to consult with the Board's attorney pursuant to Sections five five one point zero seven one, point zero seven four, and point zero eight two of the Texas Government Code. The Board will then reconvene into open session to deliberate and to take action if appropriate. Thank you very much to both parties. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Ms. Low said that some of your parents had children that were exposed to this curriculum this year. Which of you had a sixth or a ninth grader?
So just clarification, that, the, the communication was that parents have been, children have been exposed, not specific this year, but over the past years, and I will let.
I had a sixth grader.
This year?
In twenty eighteen. Same, same curriculum.
Previous sixth grader, twenty twenty.
And may I make one more comment? That this curriculum particularly was a large influence about why we left the district before my student graduated.
Okay, that's all.
All righty. Well, that seems, there seems to be no other questions, so we will convene into closed session at this time. Thank you very much.